We can take, in order to become a green community, we have ticked off a couple of the checkmarks so far out of the five requirements, or are in the process of giving so. We also applied for grant through, through Serp-ed that Serp-ed was given for $7,500 for Eric Arbean to help us with our energy reduction plan. And our, actually, so it's our energy reduction plan as well as our energy audit of our municipal building.
I think for Selectmen Gular and Chairman Taylor, who may be hearing this for the first time, we should actually discuss what it is we need to do. Not so much the history, just because we know it, but we should start at the basics, so everybody can get filled in.
Okay, so there's five requirements. If you want to actually read all the requirements.
Yeah, sure, happy to. Absolutely. So one will be as-of-right citing renewable energy slash alternative energy. I believe per Lisa Mead, who's the planning board attorney, we already satisfy that, so I don't believe we need to do anything with that.
How do we satisfy that?
We got a written letter from the town attorney stating that our current bylaw satisfies.
Yeah, we have an opinion.
Okay.
And it satisfies the renewable energy requirements.
So not to interrupt, if you have a question on that, you're welcome to email me a copy of the existing bylaw that you're referring to.
Sure.
We'll take a look at it.
Perfect, that'd be great, absolutely. We should write that down. Okay, and the next is expedited permitting.
Yes, we are.
So that's one of them. Having a 43D site is not a requirement. You can do a local expedited permitting process, so that's something we would need to figure out, although it's been a while, but I recall this was also satisfied, per Lisa Mead's opinion as well. So we have that.
Who has those?
We have the emails.
Okay.
Yeah, we have the, and the opinions, we have the PDFs.
We, who's "we"?
The committee, the Green Communities Committee. Next is the criterion three is the energy baseline slash 20% energy reduction plan, and as Chairman Gray mentioned, this is what we would probably use a bulk of the technical assistance money on, because this is our first rodeo. And the fourth criteria is purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles. This is the only thing that the Board of Selectmen needs to act on, in terms of what our board has the jurisdiction over, and Town Accountant Louise has already prepared us that list with the help of Tom Ferry as well. And last but not least is minimize life cycle costs. And that's the adoption of the stretch code, the stretch energy code, which Mr. Pickering was nice enough to give us like a summary of it, and basically it's really not much different than the current code that the building commissioner is already enforcing from the state. So touch that, absolutely.
So since we have technical assistance for the energy reduction plan and energy audit, the committee's focus over the next couple of months will more focus on educating the Dyton community about what the stretch code is and how it would affect them. So we budgeted for townwide mailing, which was approved in the FY 2017 budget or 2018?
2018, yeah.
So we are going to be working upon putting that together and then mailing that out along with the warrants articles that are sent in the mail.
Well, it has to be separate.
Separately.
That same timeframe.
Generally around the same time in early June for the town meeting.
And then we will have at least two public hearings as well regarding the stretch code. The stretch code, as I understand, Mr. Picker, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's the only thing the residents would need to vote on regarding green communities.
So if your criteria one's only requirement's already been taken care of, then you don't need to have, you know, a vote on something by law right at that town meeting if that's been satisfied. And that would mean that the only article that you'd need to bring to town meeting would be to, you can do it either as a general article or a general bylaw if you wish, in that requires a simple majority at town meeting. And in keeping with what Brett just mentioned, the department will be happy to come back and hold public forums to share information on all aspects of the program, but in particular, we usually do at least one, if not more, get people into the room, builders, people that may have questions on building code aspects of the stretch code, so that, you know, people feel comfortable understanding what it is or what it's not. And so that when they go to town meeting, they feel like they're making an informed vote.
That's great.
I have one question about that, that, one slight ambiguity. I think there would be a lot of concerns in town, for example, if a resident who already owns a home in town wanted to do a renovation, I think the concern would be, do they then have to make their whole house energy efficient?
So the way the code is right now and should be into the future, additions and renovations are not subject to the stretch code. In fact, the code that's in place right now is exactly the same code that additions and renovations would have to comply with
Anyway.
When the town votes the stretch code. So it's primarily new residential construction, so that's from the ground up. There's also an industrial commercial component for buildings of 100,000 square feet greater, which are fairly sizable. You know, here in town, you may have the potential for that at some point. And then the only other sector that would be affected potentially are laboratories, you know, industrial, commercial laboratories and supermarket buildings that are 40,000 square feet. So it's a fair, you know, it's a fairly small sector now that's potentially to that one.
I have one logistical question, and this might be a little out of order in terms of our discussion. Mr. Arbean, at what point would we begin doing the energy reduction plan? Would we wait until the vote of the people on the stretch code? Because I imagine we wouldn't want to put the cart before the horse, but I'm not sure how long it would take to do the energy reduction plan. I know Mr. Pickering has a better idea.
So when's town meetings, because I don't have my most up-to-date.
Normally June.
June, first week usually.
So in all likelihood, we're going to want to at least do some preliminary stuff on the energy reduction plan. Usually the green communities designation applications are due like right at Halloween, almost every single year. And so, you know, we wait until June to kick everything off.
Too late.
We could probably do it, we've have done it, but it makes it, you know, kind of compresses our schedule. So there are certain aspects of it that we can work in line. One of the things that we do as the department in the Green Communities Division is we work with your utilities because they have a whole mass save municipal program. And so we will help you coordinate to get energy efficiency studies, basically audits, done for any and all buildings that are municipally, you know, owned here in Dyton that they might assess, so that we can roll those studies right into that energy reduction plan. So we can start working with you on starting, you know, to get logistics straight away on which buildings you want to have done, you know, when we might be able to do that, and then the town would pick one of the national grid authorized energy efficiency vendors, and those studies will all be done at no cost to the town.
Oh, that was my next question.
We have the money, the technical assistance grant, the baseball bill, the community award, we have that now, so we can start, you know, whenever to work with you on that. As Seth said, you know, you'll pick a vendor, an energy audit vendor, I'm not giving the audits, I don't want to.
Come on.
Energy audit, I'm not going to go through that. So what we do is, the energy audits, we identify buildings, schools, deputy deputy departments, municipal buildings. These folks do the audits, and then we take that information and then roll it into that plan. We're going to even, you know, we have to kind of go through it, we'll say we'll do five buildings. We're looking for the 20% reduction, so that's the number. It is a plan, you have to have a plan to reduce the energy consumption in town 20% within five years. So if we do like three buildings and it doesn't mean that we might have to audit a few more.
Okay.
This includes the schools and everything.
It can, if you want it to.
So here, so here in Dyton, you can choose to include the schools from the regional school district that are Dyton, you know, that are in Dyton, if you wish to do so. And so we can take a look at, you may or may not know that there's also free energy tracking software that's available to the town through my department, it's called Mass Energy. All of the utility accounts for natural gas and electricity, that data is automatically uploaded into that system. And so what we would do is, I'm available to help out, we would take a look in that system and identify, you know, what the best way is to set the baseline here for Dyton, which building should be included. And then, you know, we'd go from there to start figuring out how to format that ERP.
Using that software, Mass Energy, it's the baseline.
Now, who would audit the TMLP buildings?
So are any of the, any of the town-owning buildings serviced by TMLP?
North Fire Station.
Okay.
We could, now, although they're separate districts, the North Dyton Fire District gets service from TMLP. Now, that's a separate legal entity, just like the Dyton Water District is, but obviously Dyton Water is national grid. So we would have at least two facilities there.
All right, so that's a great question. So we would have to either talk to TMLP and see if they would help out with that. If not, we may not get to have the same kind of energy audits done as we would on the rest of the buildings. But we could take a look and see if it's possible, we might be able to use some funding that may be available to to actually hire a third party to do the audits and include that in the energy reduction plan. It's possible you may not need any energy reductions, energy reductions from those facilities to get to your 20%. But we have worked within the past, just so you know, I live in Millboro. Lakefield's a green community, they're serviced by, mostly by Millboro and by Tonny. But they do have some, they had a couple of ever-source customers, all about three town lines. So we've dealt with the municipal light plants, and sometimes it works okay, sometimes they won't contribute, but we'll try to figure out a way to get those to meet up.
I just think, even if they don't participate, whatever we submit should indicate we did contact them, because we don't want to submit something and somebody says, hey, you left out of TMLP.
Exactly, exactly.
I think they've written something.
No worries on that.
So is it possible that those buildings are serviced by Columbia Gas? And so they would be, wouldn't Columbia Gas be included in that?
So, yeah, but really the leads on the energy efficiency audits are usually the electric.
Electric, yeah, I was going to say.
Now, that being said, there are certain aspects of what we may want to do down the road, which does mean it's a green community, where you can take advantage of mass save in those buildings through Columbia Gas, because it's available. But there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be the same properties available for, you know, wet for some reason.
I actually have one concern, I think we actually discussed this before, Mr. Pickering. As, I remember, I think I told you that we recently replaced all the lighting in this building and in prime time, the trailer back there, with LED lighting. So I just, and I think you answered this then, is that going to affect, what, our starting baseline?
Well, so it's going to depend, once we look at your data and you decide which year you want to use for your baseline.
That's what it was, okay, I remember that.
So if the town is applying for 2018, we'll probably let the town go back as far as fiscal year 2016, if they want to, to determine the baseline here. We want to, we want to make sure that you take advantage of any reductions that you made, you know.
On our own, yeah.
We already have not worked on that 20% reduction plan. But we do, we do have a limit on how far back you can go, it has to be reasonable radius when you apply.
That's fine.
2016 is fine. 2016, if you start 2016, that means the fire appointment is 2021, so, you know.
Okay, all right, so it's a give and take. Yep.
So do you know, Brett, when they were done?
That was this year.
Spring, spring.
Yeah, spring of this year.
So that would have been FY 17, right? So, so say, say your baseline ends up being FY 16. Just remember that, you know, by the time you apply, that's going to be quite a long time.
Correct.
You know what I mean?
And then time is running out.
If this building lighting made one another, you may end up saying, we'll reduce it, you know, it may not be as much as we can do with the other.
We'd be able to see that, right, using like fiscal year 17 versus using fiscal year 16?
Should give you an idea on, you know, if there were any changes in electric consumption in this building.
Because most of that, most of that would be seen in FY 17.
At least the latter half, yeah.
Yeah, because it was, it was.
Done halfway through the year, about.
Yeah, it was, actually 18, it's good to see, yeah, this is going to be seen in 18.
Yeah, July 1, 17 was FY 18.
So we only got a couple of, you'll have to look at that.
Using Mass Energy, I hope people to see the people go back in time, you know, as weather puts on. It's a cold winter, you're using a lot of energy, that might be a good year to start if they start, it's 20%, so. It's a lot of, a lot of things to take into account.
Will the audit include streetlights?
Harvey?
Will the audit include streetlights?
So the audit itself won't include streetlights, what's the status of the streetlights here in town?
We don't have LED, but, and I, Selectmen Gular, I remember I told you this, I think the electric light district, and I haven't talked to them recently, they're thinking, or they were at least looking into replacing them with energy-efficient bulbs, but I don't know what that status is.
So if the town is built, right, for, for streetlights, is that through grid or is that through TMLP?
Both, North Dyton Fire District is also streetlights.
So we may need to ask if TMLP will provide the data, because they're not required to. Your other streetlight accounts, that data should already be in Mass Energy's, so we would look at that and make sure they were signed correctly. And then one of the things that you can put in your plan is if you don't own them yet, right, and you're paying tariff rates from National Grid, you can oppose in your plan that you're going to look into doing an LED streetlight conversion with a commensurate, you know, potential reduction in kilowatt hours. And we have a number, you know, not to digress, but there are a number of different ways that you can take advantage of down the road, either our grant money is green community, so this is already an existing grant that's going on right now for LED streetlight conversions, that's available through DOER, that's being, it's being implemented by the MAPC, which is the Metro Poly area plan commission. So in your LFO for that stuff?
The other thing that we're expecting to get information on after the first calendar year, somebody, we had somebody come in from Mass Municipal with their Muni energy program. And they looked at what we're paying currently for rates. The town municipal buildings that get their power from National Grid are paying the same as the people out there. What she told us was, when she comes back in January, thereabouts, the rate is, will go from 0.0949 to slightly over a penny, but it's less than a total penny increase to the community and to the buildings. And what she just said was, she could, with the Muni energy program that Mass Municipal has, we can expect to save at least another penny per kilowatt hour. Now, I don't know if that's going to have anything to do with what you're doing, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Yeah, so, so not really, so, you know, your power purchase and how you choose to do that as the municipality is up to you. The only, the only thing that that would affect down the road is when we start assessing how you might want to spend the grant money that you get from us on projects that will save you the most energy and the most money. You know, that, that may, that may increase some of the payback areas a little bit, you know, just because your electricity is a little less expensive, but it's not going to have a.
You're looking at energy use, not cost.
So we, we promote, right, our, our whole deal is we measure the energy reduction, not, not the dollars, because it's such a volatile market, really, yeah.
Now, my question for you, Mr. Pickering, is how soon after the grant is awarded, if, if, you know, we get designated a green community, do we devise a project after the grant is awarded, knowing how much money we're being awarded? And what's the timeframe?
So the designation grant is really, it's a two-step deal, technically three steps. You apply, right, we review your application, and if you are approved, you get designated. It's a formula-based award of the grant, on the, on the original grant, based on population and capital income. Probably for Dyton, it'll probably be anywhere between 140,000 and 160,000 dollars. So those five different criteria are satisfied. In the ERP, you've listed a bunch of different projects that you may be looking to do in the five-year period. So then, once you know how much money you have, we do the second, there's a second part, it's called the grant application. And so that's where we get into the brass tacks, where we would pick a couple of projects that have been identified through the audits, because the National Grid in Columbia Gas authorized vendors have done the studies, the pricing, the estimated savings and all those things are locked in. And so that's why it's really good to roll that information right into grant application. So then that grant application gets, gets reviewed, okay, and so let's just, let's just say hypothetically, okay, you get $150,000 and you end up picking two different projects, say one project that is all encompassing here at Town Hall, and another one maybe at one of the fire stations, police station, you know, whatever. You would, you would apply for those, we would review them, and then once you're approved for those, you sign a contract with DOER for, for the grant amount and the requirements for, you know, keeping an eye on, doing some quarterly reporting on the grant, how the projects are going and the dispersments. And the way the dispersments go is you get the first 25% upfront, and then the remainder is, you know, effectively a reimbursement based on how you're doing for progress. So the second dispersion is 50% of the grant, and the last one's the final 25%, when everything's final. And the other thing you want to think about, you know, and how this can work well with the capital plan, is is that we also try to make sure that we leverage to a maximum amount the rebate incentive money that you get from grid and the gas company, right? And so a lot of times when we do $150,000 with the grants to a town, there's 50, $75,000 more in projects that can be done because of the rebates and incentives that are available through, through grid and through, you know, the municipal mass save program.
So the timeline here is, is it, the designation application is October, is that?
Right.
And then, and then the grant application is going to be in January?
Uh, yeah, that's, yeah, it's the middle of January. Yep, that's correct.
And so in order to get to the grant, to the designation application, we got to get these certified, that these five criteria.
Stats by all five criteria first.
Yep, I have a question. Eric, would your services be continuing through not only the grant, the community designation, but also the grant application period, or, I'm just trying to figure out sort of when, when you're expecting to sort of finish up the grant that we have with you?
Can we go through the application?
Yeah, so, so let me just, let me just describe how Eric and Serp-ed are involved in the first place, okay? We found that in the first couple of years that, you know, one of the things that the towns needed, and Dyton's a perfect example, right? You know, it's tough to come up with the resources. You have, you have a committee that's active and, you know, Brett's on the board, but that's not the case everywhere, and even still, you know, even though we think that our program is a fairly light lift for towns, and, you know, the rewards can be fairly substantial, you still, you still have things that you need to do. And so we came up with what we call these metagrants, it's municipal energy technical assistance grants. At first, we gave them directly to the towns, and some of them worked out great, and some sat around and nothing was getting done because resource issues. And so we decided that we were going to do them with the regional planning agencies. They're already out in the, you know, they're already out in their communities, you know, we weren't really sure how it was going to go, but it's worked out great. And so Serp-ed just came in this last year, they hadn't done any prior to this year, but Eric used to work at Old Colley Planning Council, he and I worked on the Brockton designation application last year. So he cut his teeth on the easiest ones he's taken. So Eric has experience, and so the way, and here's the other thing that makes it easier for the towns as well, right? So the way you guys got this grant is, you applied through Serp-ed, right?
I applied through Serp-ed, I've only been at Serp-ed four months, I used to work at.
Mrs. Conady said.
Yeah, so, so let me explain, so this worked, this has worked out great, okay? So you basically applied through Serp-ed, you did an MOU with Serp-ed, right? That basically says that Serp-ed's going to get the grant money, and then they're going to provide you guys with, you know, the X number of services that were equivalent to $7,500. So as long as we're able to continue to do that, when, when these services have been expended, the next time we offer metagrants, which will be next year, hopefully in May-June timeframe, you guys can go back to Serp-ed, hopefully just renew your MOU. And we're basically renew, we don't have to get into opening the contract all over again that way. And that's worked out well this year. So to answer your question, I can't guarantee that that's exactly the way it's going to go. But Eric will do as much work as you need him to do up to his $7,500, okay, for this grant. You know, that's a fair amount of resources for what you're going to need, to be honest with you, isn't it?
Yeah, honestly, we've done, you know, Brockton was an example, probably the best example, because it's a large city, there's a lot of moving parts, you know, smaller towns, 25 schools, and, you know, it's, it's a little easier, so there might be a chance we don't spend all of it, so.
Could we use it for something else?
Only for what's in the applicability. But, you know, we will, we will certainly do everything we can to make sure that you expend all the grant money that is due to the town for that, and then also if you need another grant next year, we'll stay right on top to make sure that you're in line in the queue to get one.
I can assist with any of the five criteria, just not, you know.
Because one of the things that those metagrants can do is not just help you become a green community, but it can, they can also be used to help you maintain your status as a green community. Because you, eventually you're going to have an annual report to file and some paperwork to follow up to make sure that you stay in line the way you want to, to qualify after you have your initial designation grant. You're going to want to qualify for what we call competitive grants down the road as well.
I see a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, I've noticed some of the communities do get multiple grants through DOER. So is that common? I mean, it seems kind of common.
So the competitive, the competitive grants are available to every single existing green community. Depending, you can never have more than one of those kind of grants open with us at the same time. But theoretically, in a town like Dyton, right, we could say, apply next year, you get designated. Then you work for that next year to do all those projects that are part of the grant. And then, in the spring of the next year, which at this point would be 2020, if you can believe that, if your, if your, if your original grant is completely closed out with us, you can apply a competitive grant. And then the same process keeps going. And so we've granted almost $80 million in energy efficiency funds since 2010. Last year in June, we did 72 of those competitive grants to existing green communities and gave away our biggest block of money ever, was $14 million bucks. So, you know, if you get into this program, it's not just a one-shot deal. It's not something where, you know, you get in and we say, hey, thanks a lot for joining up.
Here's your certificate.
You know, we're, we're engaged, we want you guys to get as much as you can, you know, and get the energy reductions that will help you guys as a town. I mean, because in the big picture, what it's supposed to do on top of everything else is reduce everybody's reliance on certain types of energy and where that energy comes from.
Also fuels, yeah.
So I'm still not, I'm not clear what the process is from here until October.
Okay.
Because first we got to get designated as a green community. Because first we gotta get designated as a green community, how does that happen?
So.
You have to check out the five boxes.
I know, but who?
So it's up, it's up to you guys as the select board, in terms of who you want to be the point person to deal with me as a regional coordinator.
Yep.
And also then Eric and I will combine and, and work together, and what we're gonna start doing is making sure that, see which of the criteria you've already met, so we don't wanna be reinventing the wheel over here, right? And then at least set up the outline for how we're gonna attack that energy reduction plan.
So we just provide that documentation to you?
See the first two documentations, see criteria one and two, the stuff you have from the attorney, if you can send it to Seth.
Absolutely, I can send it to everybody in the board as well.
And he will run it.
Good. Well, and then also starting the community outreach and, you know, looking for your stakeholders on who's gonna, who's really gonna be interested on that stretch.
Absolutely.
You know, because we wanna get, you know, we really do, we, believe it or not, we're okay with, you know, people coming and asking hard questions, because we wanna make sure people know what they're being asked to vote on. CCON just passed a stretch code a couple of weeks ago, but quite honestly, I was, what's the best?
White knuckle moment?
I was, when you look at the map down the road, if you go to the website, I mean, they're sitting over there all by themselves, so I, it made me feel good.
We're trying to help Seth turn the tide here.
Yeah, turn the whole state.
Of the green communities.
If you look at the, if you look at the map, and, you know, I gotta be honest with everybody, I grew up in Middleborough, alright, so I know the area a little bit, I used to work at the power plant right down the street, I know the lay of the land, you know, and if you look at our map, you know, Bristol County really is not very participatory in my program. We'd really like to see what we can do about changing that.
I understand.
There's a lot of opportunity with my program, in my opinion, if, if I didn't think it was a good program, I wouldn't be doing this.
To, to answer your question, Chairman Taylor, the only thing that we, now we will probably work on the timeline, obviously, in terms of how to get everything done on time, how to prepare everything for the town meeting, but in terms of what this, what the Board of Selectment needs to do, we would need to consider the fuel efficiency vehicle policy.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's the only thing for us that we, we will decide.
One other thing is you have to adopt the energy reduction plan.
Ah, that too.
Yes.
And the school committee, that's also true.
Yeah, so, so let's take it just a quick step back, okay? The energy reduction plan needs to be adopted by whomever it is applicable to, so for sure, you guys as a select board would have to adopt it. If there are, if there are schools involved from, from DR, then it would also have to be adopted either by the local, I'm not sure, are you completely regionalized?
Yes.
Yes, the regional school committee would have to.
So the energy reduction plan, if there's, if the schools are part of the baseline, they, they would have to adopt it as well, same thing with the vehicle policy.
I was just gonna ask you that, so originally when I, when we were kinda doing this alone, which was probably not the best idea, I had, was under the impression that regardless of whether the school is a part of the reduction plan or not, that, that the school committee still needed to sign off, or at least the superintendent on that policy, is that true?
They do.
Okay, regardless of whether they're part of the energy reduction or not?
So if they're part of the, if they're not part of the plan, they would be, because it wouldn't be applicable. So, so if you leave the schools out of the baseline?
Yep.
You don't have to get them to adopt anything.
Not even the fuel efficient vehicle policy? Oh, okay, see, that's used to me, alright.
They, they are actually involved in the energy reduction program.
Yeah, they have.
Excuse me, they're working with Terrain, and they've gotten large amounts of money.
They did an ESCO.
They're getting significant amounts of money to put into the buildings.
So is that the entire region, or was that just the high school? Because I, I was aware of what was going on at the high school.
I think possibly one, Riova School, not sure, the Palmera School had a lot of work done to it.
Okay.
But our elementary and middle school included?
I'm not sure, because we had bondageers for the roof, but they're doing a lot of work at the regional high school with funding through Terrain.
Right, so, so we're, so I don't know how this is gonna go exactly, but in all light windows, right, probably the way you're gonna wanna set up your baseline is you probably wanna include the two schools right here.
Okay.
In your baseline. High school's gonna be out, out of play.
Okay.
And so we could talk about, you know, that's, that's getting a little bit deep in the weeds, I can explain that to you another time. You know, that's, that's more than just.
If we include the two schools down the road, does the school department have to get involved?
Yeah, so they would have to adopt the energy reduction plan for the portion that we're looking at, which would be both schools. And for any vehicles that might be associated with those schools, they would have to comply with the fuel efficient vehicle purchase policy, which is, truthfully, that's not a difficult thing to do.
Oh, yeah, because you just replace them.
Don't be afraid of that fuel efficient vehicle purchase policy, every, one thing, everything's perspective, and the requirements for anything that is not exempt from the policy, there's really not that, it's the types of vehicles for the duty cycles that you would be, they're available, it's not, there's no mandate for electric vehicles, hybrids, nothing like that.
So we're not expected to do that with fire trucks and ambulances?
Well, but things that are over 8,500 pounds are exempt.
Yeah, just, you know, just to throw a couple of quick numbers, quick numbers at you, though, think about it this way, okay? There are 351 municipalities in Massachusetts, okay? There are 185 of them now that are green communities. We just had 25 apply, okay? So in all light windows, we're gonna have over 205, maybe as many as 210, that are designated green communities out of the 351 this month, next month, we're not quite with this number. So, you know, just kinda, just kinda take a step back, I mean, how onerous can it be?
I know.
You know, it's a, we're up to probably 55 to 60% of the population.
Kind of behind the curve now.
I also believe, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pickering, the police vehicles are also exempt, not because they are, but because there's just not energy efficient vehicles commercially available.
So police cruisers are exempt, and if you look at the exemption paragraph, you know, it states what's explicitly exempt. And then, and then kinda, it says that they, they'll have to use fuel efficient vehicles when they're commercially available.
Yep, but they're not, right?
But they're not. And so when, and when they are, there'll be, what is the standard for?
For departments, exactly.
So we're, we're not looking to, you know.
Some towns, we're working with some towns, and there might only be one car. It was, you know, as you read in the, in, even the criteria.
That's subject to the policy.
That's subject to the policy, it might be one car, it might not have any, to really get rid of the handing down of the old Crown Vics to the building.
That you just described.
That's what we do.
So that you can't do, once you're a green community.
So you have to buy, you don't have to buy a pre-ESB, you have to buy something that's fuel efficient for the assessment, that's.
That being said, we'll be happy to put you in contact with some of the towns that have really taken advantage of some opportunities, and they've had a real change in how they think about whether to use hybrids or not for some of the official vehicles here in town.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
Just one last thing, so you did mention answering questions for the community, and we think that that's a very important part, so we're thinking potentially late May or early June for a community meeting that we would rather both be able to attend.
So. It would have to be mid-June, early, I mean, not, mid-May, early May, yeah.
Because the, the.
The meeting is the first week of.
So timing is totally up to you, right? That's a local thing, you guys are gonna have a feel for what the time, and again, if, if you want us to come and kind of set the table for one, and then do one closer to town meeting folk, so that if any, you know, anybody still has questions, we'll be happy to do whatever you want.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think.
We are definitely thinking of two and spreading them out a little bit, one earlier, one kind of closer to the meeting.
And we'd like you at a meeting, obviously.
Absolutely.
What's that?
We would like you at a meeting, obviously.
Well, so, so we can talk about that as well, but I'll be honest with you, and this works great in CCON, right? I plan on being here enough and coaching up somebody like Brett or John enough, so that if, if you have questions at town meeting, you guys can handle it. I'm from here, people don't, people don't wanna hear a pitch.
Guy from Middleborough.
Guy from the state.
Guy from the state.
The state is here.
Don't, 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 don't pay Dyton with that brush.
But I'll be, but I'll be happy, I'll be happy to come and inform you too.
When we have people who have been involved with, with projects, okay, there may not be a question directed at you, but the fact that you are present.
Oh, I'll be glad to come.
Okay?
Yep.
And because the other thing is, because you're not residents, the town has to vote to allow you to speak, you know?
Yep.
So, but I, I, you know, it, it would be a matter of the committee handling everything, but you do have representatives that have, if you have any.
Absolutely, if, if when the time comes, you want me to be there, I'll be there.
Good time to think about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
I'm all questioned out, and I appreciate.
Appreciate you guys coming, it's been.
Yep, my question.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you, gentlemen.
Good. Thank you very much.
Close in to adjourn?
Second.